Welcome to this special meeting of Dundee City Council's Policy and Resources Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and requires standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure?
We shall take that as a no. Thank you very much, Roger.
So now I'll ask Mr Wardle to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As indicated, I'll now take a roll call for the minute. And I would ask if members could confirm their present when I call their name. Mr Alexander?
I'm here.
Mr Anderson?
Present.
Lord Provost Campbell?
Present.
Yippee Lord Provost Curdell?
Present.
Bailey Dawson?
I'm here.
Mr Nakla?
Present.
Mr Flynn?
I'm here.
Mr Hunter?
Present.
Mr Lynn?
Present.
Bailey Roberts? Bailey Roberts?
I'm here.
Thank you very much. Mr Rowan?
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Sowers?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr Short?
Here.
Thank you. Mr Smith?
I'm here.
Mr Tolland?
Hiya, yeah, I'm here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Mr Crookshank?
Present.
Mr Finnigan?
I'm here.
Mr McKeer?
Present.
Mr McCarvin?
Present.
Mr Malone?
I'm here.
Mr Scullen?
Evening, I'm present.
Mr Shears?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey McPherson?
Good evening, present.
Mr Coleman?
Good evening.
Mr Creighton?
I'm here.
Mr Duncan?
Here.
And finally Bailey Scott?
Here.
Thank you very much. That concludes the roll call. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
I see no rushing to put notes in the chat, so I'll take that as a no. Thank you.
Okay, there being no declarations, I would now like to advise the committee that a deputation request has been received from Margaret Hogg on behalf of Douglas Local Management Group to address the committee in relation to item two in the agenda East End Community Campus Funding and Tender Award. Is the committee minded to hear the deputation?
I see lots of nodding heads, and I certainly am. So thank you very much. Margaret, I saw you on screen just a while ago, so welcome to the meeting this evening. Thank you very much for attending. Just to run you through proceedings. So you'll have seven minutes, seven minutes with which to speak to committee. If you can hold on after that in case there's any questions from elected members. And then what we'll do is we'll move on to the document itself for elected members to consider the contents of the report. So Margaret, the floor is yours. Thank you.
All right, okay. Hi, hi, I'm Margaret Hogg and I have present with me Dean Mullin. We represent Douglas Community Centre. And we are here to talk to you about the report that's in front of elected members. I would firstly like to say that we are not opposed to the new school. What we are opposed to is the impact on our community and the fact that we as a group have never been told of the intent to look at the services that we provide in Douglas Community Centre. Despite asking at every meeting we have with neighbourhood services and elected members if there was any implication for us, we ask that on a regular basis and we've never been told anything until your report came out. We'd just like to give you an overview of the services we provide within the centre. And just as a matter of interest, last Wednesday, which was the 22nd of March, we had 398 people attend the centre in one day. We have a healthy youth work service in here, four nights provision for youth work, two nights provision for under tens. We have Highland dancing, twirlers, Polish, NHS, disability drama and singing group. We have food larger that operates twice a week. A healthy mother and toddlers group. We also have a top by Mohammed cafe, big noise, IT classes, knitting. We have a social work kit and kin group. We also house the only play therapist within Dundee City Council. We have a recovery group which addresses addiction. And I believe, Mr Alexander, you've been to see this. We have a drama group, a bridge group, local history, French, photography, Lego, speech and loud and many more one-off events. We also house a library which today alone has had four primary school visits and a one-book book session. We are right next to the new Douglas Park, which is getting a mugger pitch and lighting being put in this year. And all the present stats for the past year for Douglas Community Centre going from last April to present day is 59,923. How would this work in your new campus? The report says there is to be a review. Would like to know who would be leading this review and will the community groups have a place at these meetings? And just to point out, you're putting that report forward tonight for the elected members to vote on. When in your, when in your report, you're saying that community groups have been involved in these. At no time has any community group that I've found been involved in any discussions. And just to finish off, at the lunchtime news today, the government has announced that it's putting money into providing more community centres to address the antisocial behaviour within the country. That's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time and I'm open to answer any questions.
Thanks very much, Margaret. That's really helpful and I can say you're absolutely right. I have been up to see the fantastic services that run out of the Douglas Community Centre. And as I say, they provide a great level of service. It's really amazing with some of the stats that you've outlined there. I suppose a point and then perhaps a question as well from myself before I hand over to Bailey McPherson. And just to say, I think hopefully it makes it clear within this report that absolutely no decisions are being made on any aspect of service delivery. And that will be a requirement of this report, that there is further consultation, discussion with the community, community groups and the various services within that. And I think as well, there's an important distinction to make as well. It's not just about, I suppose, community centres. And in my mind, thinking about the review of what's available in the community is also about how we make sure there's a wide spectrum of services available. So for example, within each of those establishments that's referenced in section eight of the report, you may well have things like jobs clubs operating three days a week. So in doing the review, what we, I think what we want to do is ensure that there is a good spread across the community utilizing the brand new space that's going to be created on this first-class site. So hopefully, you know, that gives you a little bit of reassurance. And I suppose my question as well is, it's just your appetite for engaging in that process. So from what you've said, you're really keen to be part of the discussion and help steer and contribute towards that conversation. And I'm sure that's probably true of the wider membership of your group as well. Would that be fair?
Yes, that would be fair, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, we'd like to be involved.
Good. Excellent. Thank you for that. I'll bring in Bailey McPherson.
Thanks indeed, convener. And thanks, Margaret, for your deputation. I think that's a fantastic level of engagement that you have with the local community. And I think the last thing I, and I'm sure other elected members would want to see is that in any way put in jeopardy or lost. And as it happens, prior to committee tonight, at the, towards the end of last week, we had a briefing from officers on the report. And I raised that very issue and made the point that even in geographic terms, from where you're currently situated, it's a fair old distance to the proposed campus for a lot of folk in the community. And for that matter, if you take, for example, someone who lives near the Crescent, for example, the, if you like, the other end of what the proposed community campus would cover. I'm just really wondering if you could give some indication of the very many hundreds of folk that come to your facilities. Are an awful lot of them in the local area around your part of Douglas? Because as I say, I concern if there were any impact on the services that you were running, if they were moved, for example, to the community campus. If that would have an impact on the ability of local folk to actually be able to go to these facilities.
Yes, it would have a vast impact. Douglas Community Centre is actually sitting right in the middle of the Douglas Housing Scheme. So it's the same distance between one side of the scheme and the other side. Anybody living down in Douglas, towards the Sainsbury's end of the city, would not manage to get to the new campus. And also the fact, the campus, although you're saying it's on a green route and everything, which it is, the bus route to get from the lower part of Douglas to there would be the circular, which I think go off just after tea time. So that would put that right out.
Yeah, I get your point, Margaret, completely. I mean, I've taken some reassurance from what officers had to say at that briefing and what's in the report, which is that, you know, there will be a further report. And I made the point that absolutely has to be community engagement on that. You and your colleagues and others who provide services already, you know, good services that are provided in the Douglas area and elsewhere in the campus, proposed campus area, really have to be really closely involved. But I'm very grateful for your response, Margaret. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both for that. Councillor Malone, next.
Thank you, convener. And again, thank you, Margaret, for the presentation. I'm kind of addressing councillor Alexander's comments about you might have different provision of different services located throughout the area. And my understanding of the community centre is that it's a centre. That people don't just come in for one thing, they come in for multiple things sometimes. So maybe to join a jobs club, it may be to get books, it may be just to get heat during the cost of living crisis and meet other people. The concept of community centre was first developed in the United States of America and it was about social cohesion. And do you think there's a risk, Margaret, of us loosening the social cohesion around Douglas by making these services disparate and locating them in different areas?
Oh, definitely, definitely. The community centre is used by everything from babies right through till 90-year-olds. And the isolation it would cause in this community by moving all the services away along to the end, that's just be horrendous. We're still trying to get people that have went indoors through the pandemic to come back out. And that's an ongoing job for us. So yeah, definitely, there would be a big impact on us and the community as a whole if we had to move everything along to the new campus.
Convener, can I have a follow-up?
Go for it, Charlie.
Yep, nothing controversial. In terms of the demographics and the usage of the community centre, which demographic do you think, and this, obviously we've not seen what the services are going to look like and that's got to come to committee. But what demographic are you most fearful of becoming involved in that isolation you talk about?
People won't use, I know this sounds really nasty, like, but the people in Douglas won't use it. They won't use it as a community facility. It'll be used perfectly well as a school, which it should be. But the community should be run as a community and not from the school. If we go into the, I don't think the community would want to be going into a school. The school should be for teaching children. And that's the way a lot of the members that come in here feel that that's what it should be for. Schools for schoolchildren, community centre is for the wider community. I hope that's answered you.
Thanks very much for that, Margaret. A couple more questions. I would just say that we're not building a school, we're building a community campus. So it has to be about the broader community, but I'll bring in others. And I think I saw Dorothy first, so apologies, because Dorothy, you've put your hand up rather than using the chat function. So I've had to jump between, but if you're jumping the gun in front of Pete, then I'll allow you to do so. So apologies, Pete. Dorothy?
Thank you, yes. Sorry, my chat is not working. Again, I'll have to go to IT and get them to sort it out. Thank you, Margaret. And that's really useful information about the number of people that are coming in and out of your community centre on a daily and weekly basis. That's amazing. A lot of the other questions that elected members will have, and you've answered, will probably be addressed if we do get to the stage of a further review in the future about facilities in the area. But what I'd like to know, what is your key message to us tonight, Margaret, before we consider this report that's in front of us? What is the most important thing you want us to pay attention to when we're deliberating on this report?
The fact that this is a community and the moving of the larger services will just cause total isolation for so many people, so many people. You don't understand just how bad it could get. And that's not the way to go. I mean, we're meant to be a community. Everything's meant to pull together. You're building the school or the campus, as you would like to say, you're building it in the middle of a field. It's actually not in a community, it's in between three different things, which is on a very dark road, very dark road. The bus service to there is not good, not good at all. And as I say, it goes off at tea time, your circular bus, which is the only one that would take you through. And anybody else using the campus during the day would have to walk from there up to where the Azda is to get the various buses to take them at the different places. I hope that's answered Dorothy.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I'll bring in Pete next. Pete?
Thanks, convener, and thanks for coming along tonight, Margaret. It's been good to hear from you. I'll keep the question very short because it was actually Charlie kind of almost asked it in a supplementary. And I just kind of wanted to know, like, what hours do you function? Do you have a lot of stuff going on and what would be school hours? And do you think that could potentially put people off coming?
Yeah, we have, we have, the building's open at quarter to nine. I would say our first thing starts from half past nine. We have a cafe that operates two days a week. We also have top by Mohammed, which has got its own kind of people that go to that, that operates once a week. We've got our recovery group. All these things come in during the business day between nine and five. And then from five o'clock, we have got provision right through to nine o'clock at night, every day of the week. Is that enough of an answer?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, grand. There are no further questions, Margaret. So thank you very much for coming along to committee and contributing to the discussion that we're about to have. You're more than welcome to stay, although you won't be able to contribute from this point forward. So can I just thank you again for, on behalf of all elected members for joining the meeting. And as I say, you're happy to stay on, sorry, more, I'm more than happy for you to stay on and listen to the debate as we go forward. Thanks very much. Okay, we'll move on to the item Willie.
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. T-shirt on to item two, East End Community Campus Funding and Tender Award. And committee's asked to read the proposals.
Again, I think it's fairly self-explanatory and we've all had an opportunity through the briefing that was held last week to ask some questions. And I know elected members have asked a number and I'm sure that might be teased out tonight as well. I think it's incredibly important to, I suppose, lay out some of the important parts of this report. So first of all, this is an incredible investment, both in terms of the scale, the opportunity and the quality of what we're seeking to deliver. It is the single biggest investment in a singular building in the history of Dundee City Council. And I think that goes to show the sheer aspiration that we have, both for education and community more generally. And if you look at the opportunity afforded by the quality of what we're intending to build here, it is something quite special. I'm also minded to refer to some of the other examples across Scotland, of which community campuses are very much part and parcel of the approach that others have taken. And there's great examples for for academy, a very close proximity. There are examples in Perth and elsewhere as well of the community using facilities of this nature, where we're putting in first-class services, first-class accommodation and seeing a school as more than just an educational establishment. Because I think we are all mindful that we have way more schools than we do community centres. And schools do have an important role in our communities. And I've seen firsthand through the work that some of the outreach projects have done in my own ward. And I'm sure other elected members will have similar examples. And so this school, I think, is going to be a real beacon, I think, for the broader approach that we take going forward. So not only is it the single biggest investment City Council has ever made in a singular building, it's also the greenest school that we've ever built. And I think, again, that's a testament to the aspirations that we have and what we want to achieve. It's the first that we've designed from the outset with those community access issues addressed and as a core design aspect. So these superb, state-of-the-art facilities, I think, are going to be very well used. And again, will be an enhancement to that broader community. Of course, there's been reference tonight about that wider review. And I think we're all, hopefully, reassured by the conversations that we had last week and also by the report, which is really just asking us to evaluate and agree to the tender and agree that a further report will come back, which will evaluate all of the various services without presuming what the outcome of that will be. And I think, again, we'll all be very focused on that. So I will move to questions or comments at this stage. So let me just have a look at the chat. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convener. I have a couple of questions. And you're absolutely right, this is the biggest single capital project in the history of the city council. And I've really got a question around the procurement process that I would really like the chief executive to comment on. As you know, convener, I've previously raised concerns about by using, and I have no particular issue about using Procurement Hub frameworks for procurement purposes. But I have had concerns over a long-standing period about the way these are presented in the public domain. Because the bottom line on it is that this refers to the Places for People framework has made a, is intended to make a direct award and Robertson Construction Tayside have been working with the design team. Nowhere in that report do we have for the public, for public consumption, anything to evidence the fact that this is competitively tendered. How many others were considered within that framework? Why was this particular company the preferred bidder within that particular framework? Now, I've said this to the chief executive before, that I have real concerns, not about this long overdue capital project going forward. We all get it. I mean, anyone who, as I have, visited the facilities at Craigie High and Brave You would agree that this is long overdue. But the concern I have is that the way, if this was just basically out to competitive tender, three tenders are received, then you can see through both the amount charged and the quality scoring, you can see in a very transparent manner how the recommendation is what the recommendation is. None of that exists in this report. And I would really like the chief executive, who has previously said that this would be reviewed, the way we present this. Now, I would just really like the chief executive's comments, particularly given this is a £100 million project.
Okay, thanks for the question. Fraser, I'll bring in the chief executive. You may well wish to bring in other colleagues, but Greg?
Yeah, thanks, convener, and thanks Bailey McPherson. Firstly, you have asked me about this and apologized, there has been a slight delay in officers working on how this should be reported through committee. But it is something that myself, Neil Martin and Paul Thompson are actively looking at. It's to how when we bring forward further reports where we're using frameworks, how we can give elected members and indeed the public the assurance regarding the steps that have been taken to demonstrate why this is the best option and including best value. So that work is underway and I will bring that forward within the next few months. It's certainly a priority and apologies for the delay in that. Convener, if you're agreeable, Mr Martin may be able to provide some further context to elected members and the public just regard to the process that we went through, but also the different steps that, if this report is agreed, that Robertson's go through to ensure that we are procuring as locally as we can and also how that demonstrates best value.
Thanks, Greg. I'm always agreeable. So Neil, I'll bring you in.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. So in terms of the principle of the Procurement Hub framework, as with some of the others that we've utilised in the past, Escape, for example, they are competitively tendered for a framework contractor. So in this case, Robertson's have been successful as the national contractor for Scotland. And that is a process that will be no small undertaking in terms of the infrastructure of the company, the financial standing, the resources they've got, proven track record across the industry, how they can work over the whole country. And then also as part of that is a competitive cost exercise. So as you refer to the front-end costs when they're carrying out design work in conjunction with a client like yourselves and also their staff costs are all competitively tendered. So at that point, prior to them being the lead for a framework, there is that commercial competitive tension. Then moving on on a project-by-project basis, every work package that is then procured goes out to the market. And that's done on a basis of a minimum of three quotes where applicable. If there's obviously a specialist item or something that a client particularly wants, we can deviate from that. And Robertson's go out to possibly six, eight, 12, depending on what work package that is. And that assessment on which supply chain is accepted is done in conjunction with us. So again, that's done not just on cost, quality, track record, et cetera. So we're getting the most robust overall package with the best chance of deliverability and lowest risks, as well as looking at the overall cost and the bottom line number that goes together on that. And then as the chief execs mentioned, also as well as part of the key performance indicators is the community wealth building and local labour and spend angle. And within that, there are measured KPIs. And within procurement, our community officer, Rachel Thomas, worked very closely with all the contractors who run frameworks to ensure that they comply with that as a minimum and where possible, look to go beyond that. And in the discussions at the tender stage, we've had reassurances from the manager-director of Robertson's that they'll be looking to exceed these wherever possible and maximise the use of local infrastructure and labour and supply chain.
Okay, thanks very much for that, Neil. I get all that and I'm grateful for the additional information. I suppose my comment is, it's just a bit disappointing that we're the biggest single investment made since 1996 and probably ever in terms of our predecessor authorities. It's just a bit disappointing that some of the detail that I think would provide that transparency isn't really in the report tonight. But could I maybe just come on to my second last unrelated question, convenor? I hadn't really intended raising the swimming issue, which I did at the briefing, the issue of the lack of swimming provision. Because I did raise it at the briefing. But I have taken the opportunity and I thank Mrs May for the further detail on cost of busing pupils and what potential alternatives there would be for pupils, given that this campus will not have a swimming pool facility. And she also kindly gave me and reminded me of the consultation responses. And with that in mind, I am actually going to ask a question because I've read through the consultation responses and there are two in particular comments in relation to swimming. One is in relation to the, one of the public meetings that took place. And there was a question from parents and carers asking, would there be a swimming pool? To which the response actually was, can't say at present. And I'm just beginning to wonder, was the community ever consulted on the fact that their intention is not to provide swimming facilities? And it's interesting to note that the other, the other mention of swimming within the report was in relation to the feedback from Craigie High pupils who indicated without prompting that they wanted a swimming pool facility. So I'm just really wondering how much we can take from the consultation process, if in fact at that stage, the public were being told that there had actually just been no decision on swimming. As opposed to that the officers stated position was there would be no swimming provision and asked the community for their view on that proposal.
Thanks for the question, Fraser. Just to say, I mean, obviously, the report before us is about the tender, not about the design. And we've previously considered that. So I don't think diving into consultations previous to the design and the planning application being formally accepted is probably helpful at this point. But I'll ask Audrey May to perhaps follow up after the meeting and circulate a response to all elected members. Because I don't want to go down the rabbit hole of discussing the design rather than the tender document, which is what we're expected to sign off this evening. So I'm gonna.
Sorry, convenor. Sorry, convenor. You can't just shut me down like that.
Sorry, Fraser, 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 sorry. Can you just hold on a moment? Let's remember that we all know how the committee meetings run. And I'm happy to let everybody have their say and contribute to the discussion. But it's the duty of the convenor, let's remember, under Standing Order 21, to decide all matters of order, competency and relevancy. And what I'm saying is I don't deem that question to be relevant at this point in time, given that there has been a full process in terms of previous reports to committee and a planning application which set out the design. So I have asked officers to follow up with you and that is the matter decided upon.
Sorry, convenor. Point of order, convenor.
Which, which standing order, sorry, Fraser, which standing order is your point of order?
Are you just going to shut down questions that don't pass up?
I'm asking you, sorry, Fraser, we, I'll repeat one more time. We all know how committee works. If there's a point of order, I'm happy to hear it. If you can give me the specific standing order to which your point of order relates to, then I'm happy for committee to consider it. All I'm saying is, we are deciding upon and considering the tender tonight. It's very clear what the documentation sets out. I understand your question. I understand your wish to have some further information. You did reference that you asked this during the consultation with elected members last week. And I've said that I'll ask officers to follow up on the meeting. But I really don't want to continue to digress from the item before us, which is the tender. So I'm asking you very kindly to accept that response in the way it's intended. And if you don't have a specific standing order to reference your point of order, then I'm going to move on.
The point is very straightforward, convenor. We are being asked tonight to agree to a tender of £100 million. It is not an unreasonable point to ask why, within that tender, there is no swimming provision, particularly given that during the consultation.
We're going, sorry, we're going round the house this year. I have agreed with you that it's perfectly legitimate to ask questions and I'll ask officers to follow up. Sorry, Fraser, my decision is final. I'm going to move on to the next question.
That's disgraceful, utterly disgraceful.
Fraser, can you please respect the chair? I would expect more of you, given your long-established role in the committee, to understand standing orders. So I'm going to go to Bailey Dawson next, please. Bailey Dawson, please.
Thanks, convenor. Not about previous consultation, but ongoing consultation. Unfortunately, I missed the briefing due to personal reasons last week, so I wasn't able to ask this question at the time. But I think it could be pretty relevant concern. We've got community members on the call this evening. So the question is for officers, basically with regards to the consultation on the buildings across both the East End and the North East wards. Can officers please expand on what level of consultation there will be across all the services within the buildings and also the community and how that will be organised? Because this may help with, I suppose, with some of the concerns that are faced within the community. And is there, as yet, and appreciate there may not be, but is there as yet any time scales for the consultation? And when the future report will be coming back to committee?
Thanks for the question, Bailey Dawson. I'll bring in Audrey May at this point, Audrey.
Thanks, convenor. We're not, we don't have an exact timeline yet. We're not quite at that stage. Obviously, beyond this evening's decision, there's a timeline for the rest of the programme to build the East End Community Campus that we'll continue to work towards. And pleased to say that so far, as the chair of the project board, that we're on schedule. So as has been said already, there's no decision to close any facility. But what we will, we will do as we move towards the establishment of this facility, which, as you said, we hope is state-of-the-art, 21st century superb facility for the whole community, not just our school pupils. We see that as a way to improve services, reduce your carbon emissions and, and obviously costs associated with some older buildings. But what we'll need to do is to carry on the work that we've already started with various community officers who are linking in with community groups and who have given us feedback and have given us lots of feedback through the design process that we've been in. And beyond that, what we will have to do is now map all of the services that can be delivered through this facility. And of course, once we've got a full picture of that, that timetabling, if you like, we've had references to buildings with babies to 90-year-olds. And yeah, if you don't look too far to either side of our neighbours, you'll see community campuses that open from seven in the morning to 10 in the evening. And there'll be babies and 90-year-olds in those. That's the plan, that this will be, from the outset, we've designed in a building that will allow all of the community, depending on the resource and the service they're looking to use, to use that, you know, beyond and during the school day and the school week and the typical school academic year. So we will need to do quite a bit of mapping with our community groups, with individuals, with our community officers, working with those groups to look at what, how we can timetable all of that. And as part of that process, we would be engaging with community groups who are already using other facilities. Because part of the consultation so far, and I'm sorry if our delegation earlier didn't feel they were part of that, but certainly up to now, we've had quite a lot of really positive feedback from the community. Because we've asked questions like, if we build a campus and not a school, what would you want in there? What would you want to come and use? How can we design this so that we know that you'll use it as well? So we've already got a lot of really positive feedback and we want to build on that, yes. So no timeline as yet, but actually in an earlier meeting today, I was talking with my head of service and officers involved about timing the timeline, including requests from yourself, convenor, around recruitment processes as well for the governments of this building. So we're working on that. And when that's ready, we will come back to yourselves and engage with our community officers to work through teams that people like Elaine and Marie lead to work with community groups to get their feedback in that process, as we've done to date.
Thanks very much, Audrey. Okay, Jack, welcome back. I'm coming to you next unless you want a minute, because I know you got booked out of the meeting. Are you okay to go, councillor Flynn again?
Yeah, that's okay. I'm just hoping that, well, maybe somebody's already asked us while I was out. And just going back to what Neil had said about Robertson's being committed to maximise the workforce from Dundee. So I'm wondering if there's any way we could get in either workforce numbers or monetary tariffs, about the £100 million project that's going ahead. How many apprenticeships will be generated there for young people of Dundee? And how much of the workforce will be Dundee-based builders and tradespeople?
Thanks for the question. It's really good. Yeah, no, thanks, Jack. So I think it's a great question and one that I know colleagues like councillor Flynn have asked directly as well. Because I think we're all collectively wanting to see the maximum number of opportunities and investment in the city as a result of this project. So I'll bring in Neil in the first instance. He might well have to follow up with you because I realise that Rachel Tom, Thomas, who's the officer that oversees those kinds of engagements, isn't on the call. But Neil, can I bring you in in the first instance?
Yeah, thanks, convenor. Thanks, councillor Finnegan. So in terms of the numbers, there's minimum numbers set within the frameworks, depending on the value of the contract. But what will happen if members approve the report tonight? Robertson's will then go out and then let each of the work packages to the subcontractors. So what happens over a period of the contract is as these work packages come onto stream, Robertson's will work, they've got a community officer and working in conjunction with Rachel, that'll develop over the period of time. So in terms of the workforce and the spend, it's respectively monitored. And that goes into the annual report for the council and comes back. But also what we'll be doing is, as you're all aware, we've got a project board that has overall governance of the project. And at this stage, Rachel will now be invited along and I'll prepare a report so we'll be able to update the project board and members on the progress that we'll make with all the various key performance indicators that relate to labour and the spend for this project and the benefits that I'll bring to the city.
Thanks very much, Neil. You happy with that, Jack?
Did you just ask, you said that there was a minimum criteria. So what is the minimum?
I'm happy to look at the framework for that size and scale of project and I'll forward some information on to you.
Brilliant, thank you.
Neil, if you could circulate that to all 29 elected members, I think that's something we'd all want to see. And clearly, as we continue to progress with the community wealth building strategy, which, you know, will come back to committee for further consideration, this is an important part of that, given the scale of the project, as you rightly say, councillor Flynn again. So thanks for the question. And I think the final question is from councillor McHugh. Dorothy.
Thank you, John. I have a question on the tender. This is a hugely important project. I think you called it an incredible investment. And I'm sure we'll be greatly welcomed by communities in the east end of our city. But everyone is understandably concerned about the increased tender price and affordability going forward in this challenging economic climate.
Dorothy, sorry, you've gone on mute. We heard you up until the challenging economic and then you went.
Economic climate, thank you. I must keep my fingers away from my keyboard. We need reassurance of value for money. Now, this has been touched on earlier. We need confidence in the process, that all the required safeguards are in place to protect the public purse from additional liability in the future. And we need to know that accountability and liability rests where it should. What reassurance can be given to council and to the people of Dundee that we won't find ourselves back here in five or 10 years' time trying to find even more millions to keep this campus functioning?
Thanks for the question, councillor McHugh. I think it's a really good question and one, again, that I know has been discussed elsewhere in terms of making sure that we are very clear on the costs associated with the delivery of this project. Yes, it's hugely ambitious in terms of what it seeks to achieve. But with that ambition comes a heavy dose of reality in terms of the constraints on the financial situation that the council finds itself in. So value for money is clearly really important. There is reference into the report, not just of officers undertaking that comprehensive exercise and evaluating the project against current norms, for want of a better description. That sounds very council speak, but I think you know what I mean by that. But also, perhaps more importantly, the SFT also evaluating the project against their experience at a national level. Now, I'm probably somewhat answering for officer. So Neil, can I perhaps bring you in to just add to that? Thanks.
Thanks, convenor. Thanks, councillor McHugh for the question. So as John's outlined, that's absolutely right, that in terms of the process that we've taken from day one, from working with Audrey, Child and Families, and my colleagues in city development to produce the design from a brief and take that to detail, designing tender has been done on a steady process. And it's about having the right design team and the right resource in place to do that. That then takes us to the tender process. And as we've spoken about earlier on, we've got a transparent, open book policy. So officers have spent a lot of time with colleagues in Robertson Construction scrutinising that. We've also had chief officer session with Robertson's to have further detailed dialogue and understanding, not just of the tender level, as you outline, but where the liability and risk sits. And in terms of inflationary pressures, that sits with the contractor if the report is approved as stands. And then in terms of normal engagement, the standard contract is in place for the duration of the works. Now, in terms of that you refer to, where we might be in the future. And it's about the monitoring of the quality and the workmanship as the contract progresses, not just in terms of council officers, but for the main contractor and their foremen and workforce and subcontractors taking the pride and the work to carry out. And that will obviously be at the foremost of what we're looking at once works commence on site to carry that out and ensure that in terms of the package of work that's delivered, we get it to the design specification. And that then in turn gives us that best value when we get to July 25 and construction completion.
Thanks for that response. Are you happy with that, Dorothy?
I'll reflect on it and I might get back to Neil directly. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you very much. Okay, and Bailey Keenan.
Yeah, can I maybe elaborate on, given that councillor McHugh asked a really important question about accountability? And thinking, have we got clear lines of accountability such as design, material specification, quality of build? So that if there is any issue in the future, or perhaps even a build error or future fault, that we've got a clear line for who we would go back to and who we would expect to foot the bill? Given that, you know, we've got the limpieza, that we're not making any clawback on contractors, but we maybe should have done much earlier. So is there clear lines drawn in the sand? So if there's project overruns, we'll have an understanding of what was the fault? How did the project overrun to that? Who's responsible and should we pick the tab up or someone else?
Thanks for the question, Bailey Keenan. Again, Neil, I'll come back to you to answer that.
Thanks, convenor. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. So the contract that we've got and the structure of how this is put in place for the East End Community Campus is that the design team, all consultants are appointed by the main contractor, Robertson Construction. So the design and specification has been carried out by the main contractor with their consultants on our behalf. So any council officer, staff are project managers, quantity surveyors, clerk of works, monitoring what is going to be implemented on the site. So through the contract, there will be clear lines in terms of responsibility for the workmanship and also in terms of any recourse. That said, any buildings that are put up in this day and age are highly complex. And it doesn't necessarily mean it's very simple to diagnose when there is an issue or that that occurs. But there is, I can confirm and assure that there are clear lines in terms of the structure of the contract for performance and responsibility.
Thanks very much, Neil. And I think if, again, if there's any specific questions on the nature of any of that, then I'm sure Neil will be happy to provide detailed information after the meeting. But you happy with that, Kevin?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thanks very much for the question. Okay, with that final comment, I can ask if the tender. I can ask if the tender before us and the financial package to deliver this fantastic new asset for the East End of the city is agreed? Okay, thank you all very much for your contributions tonight and we shall see you very soon. Take care. Have a good week.